...a community service of the Edward R. Murrow College of Communities.
Yes, such a soft voice we need. Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, April 17th, and this is a regular Moscow City Council meeting. Art?
Yeah, would you rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible and just for all.
Thank you, Art. The next thing on the agenda will be the Earth Day proclamation that I am so very happy to read. Whereas the first Earth Day was celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, and whereas Earth Day originated in the U.S. and became recognized worldwide by 1990, and whereas every year on April 22nd, men, women, and children participate in environmental stewardship activities such as litter pickups, planting trees, celebrating sustainable accomplishments, and more, and whereas environmental education, resource conservation, waste reduction, and environmental protection are imperative to a sustainable future, and whereas it is understood that sustainability will only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of future generations, and whereas observance of Earth Day will highlight and focus our attention on our planet, our country, and our community, and whereas Earth Day is a day celebrated around the globe to remind all of us of the responsibility of each person to preserve, improve the earth, and the quality of life in his or her local community. Now therefore, I, Bill Lammert, the Mayor of the City of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 22nd, 2017 to be observed and celebrated as Earth Day in the City of Moscow, a special day to remember our earth, a day of reminding us how we all help to preserve the wonderful environment that we enjoy as citizens in Moscow. With that, I've got a Earth Day proclamation I'd like to give to somebody, so what I'd like to do is grab, whoever would like to be a part of this, come up here and get a picture with me. I don't care who it is, I think there's a bunch of us, but is there one individual in particular?
Well, Leanne Erickson's out there. She's, Leanne Erickson's out there. And she's...
Mayor, perhaps you want to take a photograph with all the Earth Day Award winners at the end?
Well, I think that would be great. Let's see, and we've got a bunch of them. There is nine, I think, and why don't we do more than that? So let's get a picture of the competition.
She's pretty, I want to get her.
Well, no, just, come here. Both of you come here and look good. You're on this side over here, and I'll get you. This'll be awesome. Now also, let's get, let's get all the Earth Day Award winners up here too, as a group of them. We're going to get that all at once, and then as we do individual awards, I'm going to get pictures of each one as well, so come on up. All of us, Earth Day, I'll sit right, we'll grab some, do like right here, I want to be ready. I want these two up side.
Photo bomb.
Yeah, we can get a photo bomb.
Photo bomb. We may have to back up.
Lot of people.
Hey Kyle, there's going to be rabbit ears. Hi John.
Photo bomb your whole thing.
They'll just always know we were back behind them.
And we'll let everybody settle down for a few minutes before we do the actual Earth Day Awards, so. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to approve the consent agenda. We'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay. Now we'll move on to the next thing will be staff recognition report. Gary, do you have anything for us tonight, sir?
Recognition tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, well now we will get on to the 2017 Earth Day Awards. And I'll do it down here at the podium. And now everybody is here, I did not see, our water champion is Steve Robichon, who was with the Palouse Aquifer Committee, and he is, last I heard he was down in Arizona somewhere in winter, and he picked a great year to go to Arizona. I don't know how I figured that out, but he did a terrific job of doing it, but the thing I want to say about Steve was, and of course he recently retired from his role as the Executive Director of the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, a position that he magnified for more than 11 years. And I've been to a number of the different fall events that we've had, and one of the things I always liked about Steve, when he got him, gave presentations, he made fun out of it, and had some jokes for us, and he had a real good sense of humor, but the guy was very, very knowledgeable about what he talked about, and he made it an interesting subject for all of us, so we'll have to, we'll save on this, I'm going to get these... Will you take, come on up Tyler, then?
But this is his award, so when we get him up here, we need to take him at lunch, or give him a bad time, or listen to some more of his jokes, or whatever.
But anyway, that was terrific. Now, I'm going to move on to the teacher award, and this goes to Leanne Erickson, so come on up here. Leanne, I want to brag a little bit about you. Teachers, teachers are, have always been a favorite, my favorite people, because they worked so hard to get me where I needed to be, because I was one of those kids that was always rambunctious, I could never sit still, I always had to be on the move, and now they call that OCD, but back 50 years ago, 60 years ago, they didn't call it that, they did, they had a different way of fixing guys like me whenever we had that, so anyway. Leanne has, after almost 30 years of teaching, she remains a pillar of the Moscow community and Moscow High School, and she is just adamant about the job she has done. I could stand here and talk about Leanne for quite a while, but it's, who always brings up these types of awards and talks about are the kids that you teach, and that's what's important, because you're an objective as a teacher. And for all of us, it's the kids and the generation underneath that they're coming up, and what makes the difference in not only our community and our state, but even our nation, those kids underneath it, is by learning from wonderful teachers such as yourself.
Thank you.
So with that, Leanne, here is your award, and I'd like to, do we need to be over here, Gary, or can we?
Okay.
Nice to be on, huh?
Do it right.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I'd just like to invite anyone in the room to join the Moscow High School Environmental Club this Saturday. We're going to ride our bikes over to Pullman for the March for Science, so welcome to come to that. We also do a lot of projects out at the Phillips Farm, and we always actually do need some adult volunteers, so contact me if you'd like to get involved in any way, we'll put you to work. Thanks so much, this is a nice award, thank you.
Okay, the next category that we have here is businesses, and this, your award, goes to the Thorn Creek Native Seed Farm, and we have two people, Wayne and Jacey. Jensen, would you please come up, Wayne and Jacey? And like I said, I'm going to read a paragraph here. "Over the years, Wayne and Jacey recognized a land stewardship need involving the Palouse Prairie. When they realized that restoration and conservation of the Palouse Prairie requires availability of seeds from native wildflowers, they decided to start Thorn Creek Native Seed Farm, and for that, we all get a chance to really benefit from that within our own area and our community." So it's really terrific to give both Wayne and Jacey these awards. So they each one have one, I had a little fun with them before the council meeting, and so instead of trying to give just one of these, we got two of them, so we, so they can, they can hang them wherever they want.
His and her office.
Yes, his and her office, that's exactly right.
Just want to thank the Commission for recognizing not only us, but everybody through the years. It's, it's an honor, and thank you very much. And the mayor.
Okay, the next, what we're going to, is the event, part of it, and the event goes to, is Food for Thought Film Series by the Moscow Food Co-op, so is somebody here from the Moscow Food Co-op? Please come up. And I mixed them up, wouldn't you know it, I thought I had them all here somewhere, but... I know it's here somewhere. Well nevertheless, I don't know what I did with them, must have left at my office, so there you have them. Come on up here, come on up here. I want to brag a little bit, because the co-op shows an average between eight and 10 documentaries and feature films each year on environmental issues related to the co-op's mission and what they do and what they achieve in our area, so with that, I would like you to speak for a few minutes and tell us what you do, would you please?
Once we, once we heard of the nomination, I did some digging. I've only been in the co-op for three years, but the film series has been going on, I learned since 2009, so quite some time. It started as the Good Food Film Series, and they changed it to the Food for Thought Film Series, so that we could encompass more broader topics that are related to environmentalism, not just food. So I can't take credit for starting it, there have been many, many people who have really built the film series over the years, and we are actually now a committee of community members, so it's not just the co-op, but lots of involved participants, and we've partnered with the University of Idaho Sustainability Center to make it free for everyone, so that students and the community can all have access. In fact, we have one this Wednesday, 7:00 PM, it's at the Kenrithy, like always, we have Leonardo DiCaprio's new documentary, Before the Flood, screening, so we hope you join us.
The Food Co-op has been so consistent throughout the years, and a very vital part of our entire community. You've been with them for three years, but they've been here for many, many years, and they've been consistent throughout the years, for decades now, so for that is, it's a big thing for all of us. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next thing, which is nonprofit organizations, and we have the Heart of the Arts. And I know Jenny's here somewhere, come on up Jenny. Sure, sure. I love this woman, nobody's got more energy than her right here, and I, maybe she had a little bit of OCD I talked about as a kid.
OCD, that's, that's organizing.
Oh, okay.
I think you're ADD. And I definitely have a, definitely.
Okay, then. Since taking over the 1912 Center, Jenny Kostrov and company have been able to provide vital services to Moscow citizens and to promote environmental awareness and action. And talk about a group that has been consistent now for years, for a decade.
One whole decade.
One whole decade, and Jenny doesn't get any older looking, she has been so, is so instrumental in making this happen for us.
I didn't know this was compliment night.
Well, it's, this is a, you know, this is one of my fun nights to be able to get a chance to just to kind of BS and talk about things like this, because it's so much fun, so, because it's really pretty cool. So Jenny, come on, tell us, tell us a little bit, you're never shy of words.
Okay, I'm never shy of words, so when I started thinking about how we are sustainable, the 1912 Center is helping to renovate an existing structure in the community, for the community, so we're taking an old building and repurposing it for a new use, and that's very exciting, and we're only one-third of the way complete there, so we've got two more floors to do, so that's one of the big things that we do, but on the small scale, I am a huge advocate of not using plastic silverware personally, and in the 1912 Center, we host the Plate Project for PCEI, which is the Palouse Clearwater Environmental Institute, Tom Lamar loves it when we say the whole name, so, and that is a great way for you at your parties, at your homes, to use real silverware, and just this past weekend, over 1,500 pieces of plastic silverware were not put into the trash, because I facilitated all of the silverware at the Beans and Jeans fundraising event for Habitat for Humanity, and that's housed in the 1912 Center, we took all that silverware over and made that happen, so it's very exciting to know that the Plate Project is seeing all of us in town not make more trash, so that's a sustainable thing, and I was very excited about that, so there we go. Yay! There's too many cameras. It was him, he was making faces.
Thank you Jenny. And the 1912, it's no secret, the entire group here, 1912 is quite a treasure in our city, so, thank you Jenny for everything that you folks do for us. Okay, moving on, I will go to Green Stewards Award. This is kind of fun, because the two folks that receive awards this year are John Kimberling and Paul Kimmel, and John and Paul are instrumental in organizing the annual Palouse Basin Water Summit, with 11 summits under their belt. These guys have been consistent about what they've done, we, they, this is an annual meeting with all out-of-town speakers that we have had over the number of years, wonderful keynote speakers, and most of them generally are authors of some type, which every time I get a chance to read one of the books, it's kind of a different twist on water and the sustainability of water on our planet, and so it's a big deal for us, and it's one of those things for our area, for the entire Palouse, whether it be Moscow, or Pullman, or the entire Palouse region, that water is a big thing for us, and of course, even though we're having an extremely wet last five or six months, as everybody here knows, between the rain and snow that we've got, it's a precious resource that we have got to make sure and manage and use to the best of our abilities, so with that, I'd like to have John Kimberling and Paul Kimmel come up, please.
Actually, we've done 12 of them already. We're planning, number 13 should occur in October, the usual timeframe. Paul is visiting right now with another tremendous keynote speaker. I think what we've done is raised the awareness of the problem, and also provided some people to come in that can educate us more about the possibilities. We don't have a water shortage, we have a water management problem, so we're trying to figure out the best ways to manage that, in all likelihood, with another resource at some point. The city is doing great work helping us, the City of Pullman, the universities, the counties, it's a great partnership, speaks well of what we're doing here, and we'll definitely be getting the word out to invite you to the next summit as soon as we have the date fixed. Thank you very much.
Never pass up a microphone, thank you Mayor, we are honored for this award, and as, as John said, this is an important conversation that we need to have as a community. We do a lot of things really well in the region. One of them is have conversations about water, we work together collectively with our, our Washington counterparts, whether it's airport development, or water resource issues, or economic development, so it's exciting to continue this conversation, but we need to, we do need to continue it. We're just finishing a water supply study with our Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, some exciting times ahead, but it will require us as a community to continue to engage with our members, our water users, our universities, and so forth, so look for lots of great information, and again, I challenge you all to be water wise and be water aware, so thank you Mayor.
One of the things I thought about this winter, late winter, and the spring runoff that we saw going down the creek, the billions of gallons of water, and I thought, God, isn't there some way we could harness that somehow and harvest that water, because I don't know how much water went down that creek, but as all of us know, and we've got some guys in here that actually had to deal with fighting the banks to make sure it kept going, so it didn't flood our town, so, and there was quite a work effort with that, but we're getting closer, I think we're, and I believe we're getting really closer and closer to... The thing of it is, is it's going to take the whole community, and all of us, working together in the entire Palouse to make it happen, and so with the leadership of both Paul and John, I think we're going to get there, so with that, thank you. Now we're going to get into the Environmental Service Group, and this happens to be the... Come on up Kyle, come on up, don't be bashful, get anybody else that you want to tie up here, the two ties, if you like. This is, this, the group has completely revamped our education and outreach program, produced videos, rollout on water conservation, fats, oils, and grease, called the Fog Program, and that means literally, when I first heard of fog, I thought, well, what are you talking about, well, it's fats, oils, and greases, and I'm going to let these guys talk a little bit about that, because I'm not going to take their thunder off of it, but it was a big deal for our community and what they did, so, and Ty presented it to council, and so take a few minutes and explain what it is, if you would. Ty?
Sure.
And these guys didn't rehearse this, too, I put them on the spot, because I didn't ask them to do this, so.
Definitely on the spot, but thank you for, for putting me here. Yes, we've worked with, with the community, with the businesses, and specifically the restaurants in the town to, to reduce the fat, oil, and grease, the fog, that goes into the sewer system and makes its way to the wastewater treatment plant, it's been very well received, you know, I'd like to thank everyone from the administration, Tyler, to Les and Mr. Redner, and then of course, council and you Mayor, it's been, the support's been fantastic, so far, very successful, and we look forward to continuing to reduce the amount that goes into the system and, and prevent the problems that, that that stuff can cause, so, so thank you.
I just wanted to thank my staff, Ty, who's here with me tonight, Nicole Baker, who's our Water Conservation Program Coordinator, couldn't make it tonight, Corey Woodley, who is our Environmental Education Specialist, she was a recent hire, she's implementing our Water Conservation Program, as well as our Sustainability Intern, Kelly Cooper. I'd like to thank Tyler Palmer for all of his guidance and support for the last year, Les, and Gary for their support, and as well as the council for continuing to support the outreach efforts, so, thank you.
You know, some of the important things, and when these guys came up with the fog in itself, and they brought it forward in front of myself, as well as the council, and I thought to myself, it's kind of an interesting thing, is this something we're going to tax on to our businesses, and what we've discovered and found out, that most businesses really want to make sure they're doing things right, it's that they don't want to do things wrong, they want to make things right, and so we've progressed a lot, you know, the way we are environmentally, and I think it's just the change of the times, how we're all progressing along to make it work, working together to make things happen, and so that's a big thing for us, and, and so that makes it pretty unique. Okay, with that, I want to go on to the next city government, Les McDonald, Les, you want to come up here with us? Les, he looks pretty relaxed over there, so we got to get him up here and have him walk over here. Les, of course, he, you know, he's our Public Works Director here in the city, and he works diligently over several years to develop a comprehensive bike group and facilities map for the City of Moscow, and Les has been through a number of comprehensive bike network shops through Portland State University and other things, and he has really worked hard to help increase ridership and contributed to the health of the community and a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by more bicycling, so Les, if you'd take just a minute and tell us, tell the folks here what you've done for bikes.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Bit of a surprise, I wasn't aware of this one this evening, so, appreciate the fact that there's some recognition for the efforts that are going on in the city, you know, I think there are a lot of folks here within the community that really are supportive of bike networks and improvements within the system and increasing our ride share, bike mode share throughout the city. Really excited about the improvements that we're going to be seeing here over the next year and a half, being implemented on the street network, and wayfinding signage, and route signage, and all the bike routes that will be put into place. Appreciate the support of the city council in adopting the program during this last year, and certainly the mayor going with me to Portland, what, two summers ago now, that was, that was a great experience to have the mayor come along and join us down there in a training, and, and training that occurred at Portland State, and they indicated they'd never seen a mayor before at one of those training facilities, so it was, it was a great opportunity for both of us, and I really appreciate the, the fact that the community is supporting this. Thank you very much.
One thing I'll add about that visit that we went to at Portland State University, we rode bikes for five days, and the very first day, we shot right downtown Portland, and I'm zipping along on a bike, and I thought, if I do not get ran over and killed doing this endeavor, and it was kind of an interesting thing, because we took bikes everywhere, we took them on those four-lane roads with cars and trucks zipping by at 50 miles, 60 miles an hour, so you could really feel that, but I told Les, I said, if I make it out of here alive, I'm going to get a bike, I used a bike, and I did get a bike, and so I've been doing that, so it's been kind of fun to do that, but anyway, it's a, it's a good exercise for all of us, so with that, and Les went back last year as well, so. Okay, we got one more award, and this goes to our student, and our student is Danell, Danell Gentry, come on up here, Danell, and students are always terrific, and so, am I going to be partial? Yes, I am, because students are terrific. Danell, and the thing of it is, we learn so much from the younger persons, people that teach us these things, and I've, I've got a paragraph that I want to just read, and it says, "No student deserves a Moscow Earth Day Student Award more than Danell Gentry. She has fought to make Moscow a better town and has volunteered countless hours to make residents and students who are global and local issues, environmental needs that matter to all of us." It couldn't be any better said than that, Danell, so thank you very much, would you like to?
Thank you. That is my daughter and my boyfriend, I could not have done it definitely without their support.
Come on up here, honey, come on, come on up here. Come on up here and stand by Mama, you can be very, very proud of her.
So I could not have done it without my family, so I'm very glad they're here with me tonight, and the Sustainable Environment Commission was also a huge supporter of my project, which ended up earning me my master's degree last December, and now I've started my PhD program, so this is not the last of me, and hopefully we'll continue working on great projects, and I've worked with a lot of other groups that are seeing awards tonight, and it's been absolutely amazing, and I can't wait to see what the future holds, so, thank you again.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is all the 2017 Earth Day Award winners, please give everybody a nice warm round of applause. Thank you all. Thank you all so very, very much. I appreciate that as a mayor, as well as the city council up here, because every one of you do make a difference in our community. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is mayoral appointments, and I do not have any of this evening. So we'll move on to item number five, which is public comment and mayor's response period. And this is a point in time where I allow folks to come up and talk to us. I allow them to give, I give them three minutes, ask them to please state their name and address, tell us what their concerns are. And this is for folks that do not, something that is not on tonight's agenda, or something that is in front of Public Works and Finance, or Public Works and Finance, Planning and Zoning, and/or the Board of Adjustments. So if anybody would like to speak on other issues, please come up and talk to us.
No, not time, Ray.
As long as it's not on tonight's agenda, Ray. You're going to get a chance.
Just went outside the door.
Come on up, David.
I hadn't intended to speak, but while I was sitting there looking out the window with all the awards, I was reminded of something I'd, a question I'd had in the past and hadn't gotten answered.
David, give us your name and address, I know who you are.
David Hall, 1334 Wallen Road, Moscow. I have a quibble about parking regulation signs, at least the one in front of the library that went up recently. There's one sign that says, no parking from whatever hours to whatever hour. It doesn't say whether it's the whole block, it doesn't say what days, Monday through Friday. There's a church across from there, is that no parking on Sundays for them? It just doesn't tell you enough to know how you can park there with this whole block or one spot or.
And you say this is up by the library?
Yeah, it's right in front of the public library, so.
Okay, well, Les is taking notes on it down there, David, so he'll get back to you on it. How's that? Because I don't know. Thank you, David. Okay, well, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is item number six, amendment to MCC Title IX, Chapter 11. Rod will be presenting. And this is about, before Rod gets talking on, I just want everybody to understand and know some things here. This is not a public hearing, but I do plan on taking a public testimony for those that are interested. But I'm going to let Rod present, and then we will talk about it, and I will give everybody the rules of engagement here so they know what's going on. With that, Rod, the podium is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council. What I have before you is proposed amendment to Moscow City Code Title IX, Chapter 11, dealing with sidewalk vendors in downtown. The city of Moscow regulates sidewalk vendors' operations within the public right-of-ways within the central business district. And they have regulate the time period that they're allowed to operate between nine in the morning to nine at night. Also, tonight, dealing with this, there's an issue with the farmer's market, which runs from the first Saturday in May through the last Saturday in October, that operates every Saturday from eight to 11:00. During that time period under Moscow City Code, no sidewalk vendors are allowed to be within the farmer's market boundaries unless they qualify as a farmer's market vendor. The Farmer's Market Commission has been discussing the issue of non-farmer's market vendors setting up operations in close proximity or at the boundaries of the farmer's market for a couple of years. They believe that it gives impression that these vendors are part of the farmer's market, and they may have some other concerns about the integrity of the market. And so I was asked to propose an amendment to Title IX, Chapter 11, Section 13, which relates to the location of licensed sidewalk vendors. This proposed amendment would prohibit sidewalk vendors from being within 200 feet of the farmer's market boundaries during the farmer's market hours, creating a distinct separation between the farmer's market and any other activities going on downtown Saturdays during farmer's markets season. There is an exemption under the sidewalk ordinance that allows a business downtown that is located within the farmer's market to be able to do a vending operation continuously right in front of their business. So this does not do anything with that. Businesses downtown would still be able to operate on occasion in front of their business. That I have nothing further.
Thank you, Rod. And I think what I'll do right now, before I start getting into deliberations with the council, I think I'll go ahead and invite those that would like to come up and speak. And here's the rules of engagement, ladies and gentlemen, is that when you come up, please state your name and your address, and we will give you three minutes to state your concerns, and we'll go on to the next person. If that sounds fair, please come up and tell us your concerns.
My name's Ray Wallace at 2315 Waymouth Street. I'm the owner of Buy the Dozen Donuts in Moscow. I urge you to vote no on this ordinance to add 200-feet buffer around the Moscow's farmer's market and blocking street vendors from selling during the market. Let me begin by saying that we love farmer's market and are proud of the recognition that it has earned nationwide, but my concern is that this proposal specifically targets my business, Buy the Dozen, the business we purchased in 2015. Buy the Dozen has been present as a sidewalk vendor right next to the farmer's market since 2009, back in the day when the market only took up a portion of the parking lot on Jackson Street. Operating near the market has been a critical part of our business. We have a right to earn an income. We purchased this business in 2015 with the understanding that we could set up near the farmer's market with a sidewalk vendor's license. We rent a storefront downtown about 30 feet from where we usually set up, so this is, if we set up right in front of that, it would not be where we usually set up, which would be out of sight when, out of sight, out of mind, essentially. We've been the most consistent presence near the farmer's market as a sidewalk vendor over the years, and I can't help but feel that this rule change is specifically targeting my business, Buy the Dozen, and our ability to earn an income. Operating on the corner near farmer's market is critical to our annual business income. We are a local, family-owned business. We have also employed 18 non-family members since we purchased the business. We have a paper petition that I have here that I can pass out with about 50 signatures that we left at our store during the, since Thursday, which were only open from 7:00 until 2:00, and were closed on Easter. In addition, I've printed many supporting comments from Facebook over the last few days. At last count, we were at 170 shares and a volume of comments about this ordinance supporting the position that this ordinance should not pass. Many of the comments mentioned that Buy the Dozen is their first stop when going to the market. Here are a few quotes from the Facebook page. "When I lived on Main Street, right above Friendship Square, you were the reason I got up before noon on Saturdays." Or, "This was my 'half-two' buy when I went to the farmer's market." Or, "This is what, this is why my family goes to the farmer's market." Or, "Buy the Dozen always has our business. Without them, we wouldn't go to the market as often." Or, "I think it adds flair. We must have you there. You are the reason I get my daughter to come to the market and meet. I'm certain Buy the Dozen is the highlight of so many families that come to the market." Please vote no on this ordinance. And I can pass you these if you'd like.
Go ahead and bring them, just put them right up here, Ray. We'll put them over.
I tried to organize these Facebook comments, but.
Thank you, Ray. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name's Jennifer Wallace. I live at 2315 Waymouth Street in Moscow, and I'm also asking the city to vote no on the proposed ordinance to ban street vendors within 200 feet of the farmer's market. Let me first say that buying Buy the Dozen was not my idea, as many of you who are married know that that's somehow the way it goes in families. But it was my husband's dream, and I have to say, I have come to love it. I love that we fill a storefront in my hometown with a vibrant and fun business. I love that we employ others and give them a chance to fulfill their own dreams. I love that we have an opportunity to teach our children, two of Homer are here with us tonight, and one is at Scouts. I love that we have an opportunity to teach our children what it means to have a job and to work and to serve others. But I also love that we support our community in so many ways. Buy the Dozen donates to bear boosters, we support specific sports, including football, lacrosse, wrestling, and other individual teams. We're a sponsor of fun runs, like the Hopple Run, which is happening this Saturday. And looking back to our first summer, we sent hundreds of dozens of donuts to the firefighters fighting forest fires on the different lines in Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. Buy the Dozen is a loved, recognized element of Saturday mornings, and you can see that from the Facebook comments. It adds to the ambiance and experience of those who come downtown. Last year, we tested open only out of, being open only out of our storefront at 104 East Sixth Street on several Saturday mornings. The drop in income was significant, it was measurable, and it's enough that if it continued, it would affect our ability to serve, to, excuse me, survive as a business. Bluntly speaking, farmer's market is the equivalent of our harvest season, and if we are not able to be visible to the farmer's market crowd, even being 30 feet out of sight, out of mind, is going to have a significant impact on our business. We believe the city of Moscow has an obligation to its citizens to ensure that its policies and programs create an environment that promotes a vibrant community, and that includes a healthy downtown. We feel that the council does a wonderful job with this. As a family, we've moved away for job reasons and come back twice, because this is a wonderful place to live. We love this community, and we want to be here to help keep Moscow amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Adam Wallace. I'm a son of Ray and Jennifer Wallace. As you probably got from my mom's reading, Buy the Dozen has had a positive effect on our community with its providing of employment, helping with fundraisers, and sponsoring organizations. It was also my first job, and it taught me how to work, you know, be a productive member of society. If we were to be harmed by this ordinance, or even to go out of business because of it, we wouldn't have any of these things that Buy the Dozen brings to Moscow, and I believe we'd be worse off for it.
Thank you, Adam.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Tom Preston, 621 Hathaway Street. Don't have three minutes of comments, I just wanted to encourage the council to vote no on the ordinance. I think it's important for our city to support local business. We've spent a lot of time trying to be pro-business in this town, and I think this is a good opportunity to show that we are pro-business, and that we're going to support the local small business people when we're losing other businesses in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and public. My name is Erin Carroll, and I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Farmer's Market Commission. So I thought it appropriate that I weigh in on that, since our name is in the agenda item. First off, I want to commend Buy the Dozen, not only for your delicious donuts that I think many of us eat regularly, but also for the testament that your social media support and obviously the feedback on, that this agenda item has solicited. I have a few comments in context to this. This agenda item has come up very quickly. In fact, it got put on council agenda before the solution even came to the Farmer's Market Commission. So although we did recommend it, I think it's missing a lot of why this was put forth, and hopefully whether we make a decision tonight or it's postponed, I just want to give you and everyone else a little bit of that history. I can assure you that this was not written with the intent to target one business. This issue predates the Farmer's Market Commission, it was brought up on the advisory board by both members of the advisory board and city staff. The concerns are valid that people have brought up, and I can, it is, I do not need to remind you, I don't think there is one farmer's market policy that fits everybody. It doesn't matter what policy we're recommending, we have public comment. The history and context of this is, the commission has looked at this in the last few years, and we have representation on this commission of the Chamber of Commerce during that time, representing local businesses, vendors within the market, and citizens, as well as some other appointed members. We try and get feedback from all of those resources, and that is our job to provide recommendation. We do not make decisions. Our goal in asking the city for help in addressing this issue was to maintain the integrity of the market. There's a lot of time and resource that goes into putting on the market, and we want to make sure that those are buying into it or getting what they put into it. Our city staff members, as well as volunteers from the commission, spend their time doing farm tours to ensure that produce vendors are growing what they say they grow with the integrity that they state they do, and that the food that they're bringing is of quality. We also jury all of our craft vendors to make sure that what they're bringing is made and adds value to our market with unique and handcrafted goods. I say this to say that we have a farmer's market that is carefully curated. It is made by meeting the needs of our consumers, and the quality is something that our consumers expect. They know that it's unique and it has value in our community. Unfortunately, with the street vendor permits, or what is called, I believe, mobile vending, people perceive street vendors as part of the market. So it can be deceptive that people think that they're getting the quality or locally-sourced ingredients that they get within the market from anyone vending around the market area. This may not be applicable to all of those that choose to vend on the street, but that's where the concern came from. We had maybe produce vendors that were able to sell at half the price because they were using cold storage produce, therefore making unfair competition for our vendors who are locally growing it just around the corner and putting that care into their craft. Throughout all of these discussions, to maintain the integrity of the market, to maintain transparency of what the market is providing to the consumer, the commission requested staff and legal guidance on what this would look like. We did take consideration of brick-and-mortar stores and were relieved to see that this would not change, that they could still sell on their sidewalks. We've also done surveys of entrances into the market to ensure that there are high-traffic volumes that go through any entrance of the market. So even in front of the storefronts, we know that people will still be walking by. I understand that there's a concerted speed. Like I said, this was put on council agenda before the commission even saw the solution, a lack of communication, and we express concern that maybe the public wasn't aware of this in due time.
Erin, could you wrap it up?
Sure, we can slow down and reevaluate the process. It would be helpful if this is going to be put on the commission's plate, if we have a clear charge of what you'd like us to look at. Whether it's taking into consideration specific businesses, the way that items are juried by staff members, whether or not there were appeals with the commission was not aware of, or the process in which the commission should be involved, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frances Preston, I live at 914 Orchard Avenue. Whether the vote goes ahead tonight or not, I would like the council to vote against the ordinance. I have just one question, which is, if this isn't, I don't know how to phrase that without making that a loaded question. I go to the farmer's market, I'm not aware of a plethora of street vendors on the outskirts of the farmer's market. So how many of these street vendors are there that we're trying to stop, or that we're trying to get a distance between? Because the only one I can think of is Buy the Dozen. And I feel that this ordinance is very much unfairly aimed against them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm Jen Pifner, Assistant City Supervisor, been working with the farmer's market. We did a bit of research on how many vendors this has included over the years, and it's been, in some years it's been upwards of 10, and more recent years it's been down around four or five. So, it's kind of the range we're looking at.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, I think I'm going to turn it over to council, let council discuss it now. So, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to strenuously oppose the passing of this amendment for the following reasons. Number one, the proposal was brought to committee by staff without any patron, vendor, or commission complaint or recommendation. The proposal was added to the Farmer's Market Commission agenda last week after I questioned Mr. Hall about the impetus for the proposed change. Number two, the small handful of licensed street vendors do no harm to the farmer's market, and in fact, may add to the attraction in some cases. Number three, the proposed change creates an appearance that the farmer's market is using its position as the tall hog at the trough of public subsidy to bully small enterprises whose business model may not line up exactly with the philosophy of the farmer's market. In short, I feel that the change benefits no one, and it does harm to some, and therefore should be rejected. I understand the protective position of the Market Commission and the associated staff, and I don't have a problem with their, the standards that they impose with. and I don't have a problem with the standards that they impose within the market boundaries. We definitely don't want the farmer's market to be a cheap flea-market type affair, but we also don't want it to be an elitist, snobbish type of market. So, I think outside the boundary is outside the boundary, and it should be left alone.
Gina.
Okay, I too, I guess I'm not as strenuous as Mr. Bollin, but I'm sort of frothing at the mouth. I really do not appreciate, yeah, think about that.
Everybody take a couple of deep breaths, we're going to get through this.
The way that this was proposed was incorrect, and at best, irritating. Let's have some feedback from the commissions, and let's have some warning, and some straightforward communication. I do think there are some questions that I would like to see answered. I don't know if this is a form of a charge or not, because I'm one of five right now. I want us to address the question of the mixes, or the ingredients. What percentage of local do we require in our farmer's market? That's never been addressed, and it seems somewhat unfairly applied, if you look at the existing food vendors versus, say, By the Dozen, for example. You know, what was the reasoning there? And what was the percentage that tips the balance from a yes to a no? There's also the jury process. That's a squishy gray zone, if I've ever seen one, and we need to bolster that very I also do not believe that we, I don't want to say, what'd you say, tall hog at the trough of something subsidy?
Public subsidy, yeah.
It was horrible. I do think that it is important that the market continue, and that we support it, but I don't think it should come at the detriment of local business.
John.
Well, what she said and what he said, however, oh, thank you.
We need to hear you, John.
My problem, in addition to those, has more to do with the perception that we are going against essentially one particular business. And whether we are, or whether we are not, I perceive that we are. We're using the city council's hammer against the local business. And that local business, I don't know these people. If half what they said is true, we should continue supporting them, and if there's any way at all that we can get them into the farmer's market, they should be allowed in. And you mentioned the jury process, and I think that when it's all said and done, I can't support this, and I can't support it mostly, because I think there's a perception of, we are going to force you out because we don't like what you do. And I don't think that that's the way this city operates, I don't think that's the way the city council operates, nor do I think it's the way that we should operate. So, I'm going to come down on the side of do not pass.
Okay, we've got two more councillors, Art and Catherine, so I'll go with you, Art, and I'll come over to Catherine.
I feel like I'm operating from a point of insufficient information, as it stands right now, so at the risk of sounding like my old major professor, I have three questions and a comment. So first question is like this. Approximately, how far out does 200 feet go from the farmer's market boundaries?
I can answer that. What they measured, it basically would take, people on the east side of the farmer's market boundaries would put them on the eastern side, east side of Washington, and on the western side, it would basically put them on the western side of Jackson. And then probably about a, not quite a half a block down north on and south.
So a block away from the...
Not quite a block.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Art.
Okay, next one is, in the current ordinance, what does "on occasion" actually mean? Is that once a week, once a month, once a quarter?
That's what it sounds like to me.
So it could be anything, I guess?
The council allows sidewalk vending by bricks-and-mortar businesses. It was intended to allow the crazy-days-type, or bargain-table situations that you see in most downtowns. Was not intended to be an every-week or every-day occurrence, however, when the bookstore down, I can't remember the name of the bookstore.
Book People.
Book People. They had a rack out front that they sold books all the time, and of course, the bicycle shop also had a rack of bikes outside. And it seemed to be accepted by the community, and that was fine. So occasional could be...
Community definition.
Exactly.
And the last question, and I don't mean this pejoratively, but if the donuts by the dozen aren't operating on the sidewalk directly in front of their business, whose sidewalk are they operating on? And how did that come around?
I can answer that as well. Sidewalks in the downtown area, the front of the business is the beginning of the public rights of way. The city council has the authority to regulate activities within the public right-of-way, which is why the, oh, the occasional vending out front, the sidewalk cafes, all required separate permits from the city council. The regulation of those activities in the city rights-of-way are exclusively up to the city council. In the past, there have been discussions about what does it mean to be within the farmer's market. The jury process, I think that Gina alluded to, is something that the previous owner of By the Dozen donuts attempted to get juried into the market, they failed to do so, so the previous owner got as close to the market boundary as she could with her business, which was fine, as long as she didn't come within the market boundary. So this was something that's been discussed at Farmer's Market Commission, and by the groups that preceded the Farmer's Market Commission on several occasions. I guess one of the things I'd warn the council about before you dismiss, and not saying that this ordinance in its current form needs to move ahead as it's presented, but it's easy to take a one-situation vendor, if you will, or owner of a sidewalk business, and make a sweeping, I guess, prohibition of something. As Jen indicated, there have been between ten and five of these various vendors throughout the years. And although you have a downtown business doing it today, you may have someone who isn't affiliated with the downtown business, or a local business, doing it tomorrow. So I think the council's reluctance to move ahead tonight is probably a good thing to do, while looking at several things. How the jury process works, maybe as the Farmer's Market Commission is moving forward with their strategic plan, and that process can be looked at, looking at perhaps some alternative than just an outright prohibition for 200 feet. So I think further work can be done, and certainly that's why the Farmer's Market Commission was formed.
Mr. Mayor, could I address the question?
Yeah, because I don't think we quite got to what I was aiming at.
All good information.
Jennifer, so who you're directing the question to?
It was going both ways, it's just kind of, if the vending operation isn't directly in front of the storefront brick-and-mortar that's there, whose storefront are they in front of, and how did that come to be?
I can tell you that under the ordinance, if it's a restaurant, another, a food vendor can't be right in front, you have to have the permission of the business right in front of that, to be adjacent to the property. But that's for a sidewalk vendor. But a business can actually do its business right out in front of it.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm, that's where I'm trying to...
And I would just, one other thing, just remember, this is an issue about regulating the public right-of-way, and you're raising, there's other issues that have been discussed about the farmer's market process, so there's, make sure that you understand that there's two different issues here, at least two different, that have been brought up, and we're only dealing with the public, or what, the only thing before you is the public right-of-way regulation.
Yeah, I think this kind of impinges, at least in my head, on what the heck is going on.
Art, did that answer your question?
No.
I'd like to.
If I could address it, Mr. Mayor and council. So, By the Dozen rents space in the Neely Travel Building, that's on the corner of Sixth and Main. It's been any number of things over the years, that tiny little space right next to John's alley, was an eye doctor, I believe it was a hairstylist at one point, so we have a little tiny spot there. And our landlord, prior to us buying the business, the landlord had an agreement with the previous owner that allowed, so if this is the corner of the block, and here's Neely's, and we're tucked right here, here's Sixth Street, here's Main, the landlord allows us to come right out here on the corner. And so visibly, we function right up against the boundaries of the market. We aren't saying that we don't, but we are saying that is...
It's with permission of the...
It is with permission of our landlord, and when we purchased the business, that agreement was in place. And so that was our understanding, that it would be able to continue.
Can you add one more comment?
Yes, now I'm done with questions, and now it's the comment. So, the comment is, I think we're operating somewhat prematurely here, and not exactly putting into the ordinance the results that we would like to obtain, in terms of especially regulating some of the vendors who may be skirting the issues of fresh produce and things like that, and that's problematic. And also, as Gina brought up, I'm interested in having this returned back, and work it back through the process again, dealing with some of the other food vendors, and how do you draw a line about how much is brought in, how much isn't? And my profession as a serial chemist has taught me that cake donuts and donut formulation is the trickiest bit of chemical leavening activity that there is. And to formulate on your own is going to lead to an inconsistent product. So, how do we handle this issue? It's very sticky, and for that matter, are the restaurants that are selling burritos and things, are they making all the burritos in-house, from scratch ingredients, or are they bringing in the burrito tortillas from elsewhere? And this is something I think that the Farmer's Market Commission could probably go back and look at more closely, both in terms of defining what goes into allowing someone into the farmer's market, but also vetting the language of the ordinance to better capture what it is that seems to be the impetus behind writing this ordinance at all. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Art. After giving us that scientific thing on donuts, I just like to eat them, I don't care, as long as they taste good. And go with coffee, now Catherine.
Well, I think we're all coming from the same place, and that we felt like this came to us without coming through the commission and Public Works and Finance, and kind of finding its way up. And so, everything that everyone has said, I agree with, and we all question the same thing. I went looking through the minutes from the Farmer's Market Commission, and hunting through Public Works and Finance, I'm trying to figure out, how did this end up on our agenda? So it was the same, it was the same thing. So I really like what Erin said, which is what I was hoping that we could slow down and reevaluate specifically, and go through the process, and just kind of turn it back to the commission. Obviously, it has a history, and there were issues, and I think the management of the market's been done really well, and I think that the focus of the market has been really clear, and to make sure that it is a farmer's market, and the integrity, I think that word is true to that. But I think it would help to just wind this back, because you're trying to deal with something larger. I definitely see that this is an issue to make sure people aren't using the market for their benefit. So I would, I would, I don't even know if we can do this. I wanted to move to withdraw.
You could move to, yeah, you can either move to table it, or you could move the, no?
There's several different things.
Yeah.
You can outright reject the ordinance if you like.
Yeah, so then I would move to reject the ordinance.
Second. Okay.
And my first job was at a donut store for a year, and I can make great donuts.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion by Catherine, and a second by Jim, just to reject the ordinance in this form, and to send it back for further work to staff, is that how I'm understanding this motion?
That's how I would understand it.
Any other comment before we do a roll here?
No.
I'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, now, there's a couple of things I want to say, as we go along here. Our farmer's market is the absolute best in the state of Idaho, make no mistake about it. And we're in the top twenty in the nation, and that's something that this community can be proud of. And Erin, she's there somewhere, you guys have done a wonderful job, and I appreciate the comments that you had, Erin, because the commission has done a wonderful job in looking into these things. And I think, and the commission's only been around several years now, so you guys have been tasked with a lot of things, because you've got a growing market, and there was a comment, one of the councillors made up here, that, look, we don't want this thing to be a flea market, we want to have it so it's right, and it fits our community, it works in, but we all know what an absolute gem this is for our community. So with that being said, you know, there's some things that the commission could also take a look at. Maybe we need to open up from First Street down to Third, on that side too, if we're, if we have the need for that, that might be a possibility, Erin, to look into, as we're going along. And I appreciate the fact, what you got up and said, because I think this kind of came to us, and I think we've got to be cognizant of folks that are businesses, right in our downtown as well. This isn't, you know, somebody comes from out of town, or comes somewhere and wants to set up outside the boundaries, that's, we're talking about something of a different thing too. So we need to work on this, but I wanted to make sure that the commission understands, and the jury that works on this, that I appreciate, and I think all these councillors up here would say the same thing, the work that you men and women do, because it's a big deal for us. We want to get it right, we want to have it right for our community, because this is the number-one market in the state. I get a chance, as a mayor, to brag about it every single time I go to Boise, and I can kind of jab them with it, and I get a chance to even talk to the Boise City about what they do, and they've asked me questions about it, I've invited them up, and I think that's a big deal for us. So, and even on a national level, so that's a big deal for us, we're going to all, in this entire community, be proud of it. And so, with that being said, we'll move on to the next thing, but I just wanted to share that with everybody in this room, because it's a big deal for us, and in two weeks, we're going to start another farmer's market year, and we're going to have a downtown bathroom. Isn't that cool? So with that, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to item number seven, which is Latour Recovery Center funding request.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have before you tonight is a request from the Latour Recovery Center. Daryl Keim, the executive director of the Latour Recovery Center, is here to request participation in the amount of $4,500 for construction of a confidential or semi-confidential conference room within the recovery center. The council, this came forward, the council en masse attended a breakfast benefiting the recovery center almost a month ago, and at that time, the city was requested to participate in a donation for the recovery center. In lieu of that, Mr. Keim came forward with his request for participation in the conference room, and sent the letter that you have in your packet. This is similar to the request, which was funded by the city council toward the Sojourners Alliance, to assist in a project, to assist them not only with getting back on their feet, and getting funding in order to go on, but also to help them with, I believe it was, the remodel of two bathrooms, as I recall several years ago. So with that, I'd ask Daryl to come up and address the council, if you will. This, by the way, would be proposed to be funded from non-prioritized projects in the legislative budget, which currently has a balance of $15,000 in it.
Okay. Daryl? Good evening, Daryl.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, do I need to state my address?
Ah, no, we'll, I guess so, probably.
617 South Logan Street, Moscow, Idaho.
Thank you, Daryl.
So I am the program director of the Latour Recovery Center, and for the record, I am having a major donut craving.
Oh, I love cake donuts.
About donuts like that, not having. So Gary really summarized it quite nicely. We opened September 1, 2015, and since then, we've had approximately 10,000 different customer contacts. That's not 10,000 different people coming through our center, but it's 10,000 with a lot of repeat people coming through our center. So my point is, we're well-used. And one of the main things that we've heard from folks as they've come in, has been that they would like to see a semi-private meeting space in addition to our wide-open floor plan. You know, we're not completely anonymous there, but people like to have the option of feeling somewhat anonymous. So identifying that, we had built, and yes, it is already built, we took a leap of faith that we would find the money, and we put in a couple of walls in the back with a window, so for safety purposes, we don't allow any truly private places in our facility. And I have to say, it's been built three weeks, maybe a month now, it's really... It's really popular. It's probably the most used space now that we have, in fact, is the semi-private meeting room. But that's it. It's a semi-private meeting room for folks that want to have more anonymous meetings than the wide-open space, where you can still have anonymous meetings there, of course. But some, some groups are more anonymous than others. Let me put, just put it that way. We have a daily Alcoholics Anonymous group meeting. They're what's termed an open meeting. And for those of you that know about these types of groups, they have open meetings, they have closed meetings. An open meeting Joe Public can even come into and see what they're all about. But other groups might not want to be an open meeting, and they didn't have that choice in our facility until recently.
Well, Daryl, you know, every one of these councilors are sitting up here, as well as myself. We're at the recovery.
Absolutely aware of that.
And I think that everybody up here, and this includes myself, appreciated what they heard and the involvement that the recovery center does, and how important it is to this community, so. Questions for Daryl? John?
I don't have any questions. I'm fully in favor of this.
I like you, John.
I may be knocking on your door one of these days.
I'll bring donuts.
I know I would be welcome if I showed up. But I went to the breakfast last year, I went to the breakfast this year, and the increase in the number of people and the demographics of the people that showed up was amazing. And the recovery center is, has been accepted, I think, by the entire community and will become more accepted as time goes on. And having the ability to have meetings where somebody just can't walk in because people are discussing personal items or whatever is good. And I think if we, we've got the money in our non-prioritized budget, and they're asking for $4,500, I would move that we approve the funding.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion by John and a second by Gina to approve the one-time funding of $4,500 to Latont Recovery Center and to take it out of the non-prioritized budget.
I was just going to comment one other item that strictly in a cold accounting sense, in terms of cost-benefit, the funding that goes in at this meager amount clearly saves the community far more than that in other services between the law, the courts, the hospital, neighbors who might be impinged on by people otherwise. And so I think it's money well-spent for the community at large.
Agreed. Okay, we'll start with you, Art.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
$4,500 for the recovery center. Okay, item number eight is a budget hearing. We talked about this once, but we're going to talk about it again, August the 7th. Gary, reading your sir, you have got the podium.
Thank you, Your Honor. Somewhat sheepish, I am back before you after having set this hearing last time. We misread the calendar and erroneously set the public hearing on the FY 2018 budget for August 14, 2017, which is actually an off Monday, so it would have required the council to convene on an off Monday. Knowing the enthusiasm the council has for those extra meetings, we thought the better path was to come back, admit our mistake, and ask that we inform the county that that hearing should be held on August 7, which is the first Monday in August, which will give us about three weeks from the close of the Budget Council workshop, plenty of time to get the ordinance together and present it for public hearing at that time. This needs to be reported to Latont County prior to April 30, so we're still within that timeframe. So we would ask that you would reset that public hearing for August 7.
I move that, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's do it. I move that we reset the date for the FY 2018 budget for August 7, 2017.
Okay, we got a motion by Catherine and a second by Art to set the budget hearing for August 7, 2017. John?
Aye.
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 Okay, we got, we're on board for the 7th of August. But as the end of our meeting, I'll go to reports. What's up with you, Jim?
Well, city Public Works Finance, pretty much everything's been covered in the meeting tonight. Attended the Arts Commission meeting last week, and plans are well underway for Art Walk on June 16, so plan on that, getting downtown for that. It'll be a huge fun thing. Also, there's information being gathered about the art at the library, the public art space at the library, so if you want to submit for that, you're welcome to do so. That's about the crux of the Arts Commission meeting. Also, attended Farmers Market Commission meeting last week, and some of what we talked about tonight was discussed as an addendum. But there's a lot of work going on with the strategic plan to make farmer's market even better than it is, and it's a lot on their plate, and those people are working really hard to make that happen, so have a lot of compliments for that. And that's all I have.
Art, got nothing for you.
Okay. Catherine?
Okay, and to add on to what Jim was saying, farmer's market, be sure to vote on a poster. And they're online, there's the five posters, and I talked to Kathleen, and there were 16 submitted, and they, they jerryed them down to five. So for the farmer's market, so vote on those. I don't know when the closing for that is. All right, I went to the fire department board meeting and then the general meeting, and they have an award ceremony May 5, their life-saving award ceremony, and Debbie Carscall is going to be pinned as the new ambulance, or I don't know if they call her EMT, but to take Dave Reynolds' place at Station 3 from 5:30 to 7:30. Of course, you're requested to be there. It's a good deal, May 5, that's May 5. And then they are at 106% of their fundraising goal, so they're over $98,000. They were glad about that. The fire department's continuing to update their bookkeeping system that started September 1, and that's going well. The residents are leaving because of the school year's coming to an end, so they'll be changing crew bosses. They're interviewing for new residents now. They're also working on Station 2 and dryer 1's getting, I mean, there's going to be a new dryer at Station 1. And they have, are getting estimates for their brick on the building because things are falling apart.
Like a closed dryer?
Yeah, closed dryer.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I had the 1912 facilities development meeting, and the re-roof is coming underway, and they were hoping to go to bid now, but it's taking a while to get the drawings done, so they're still working on the drawings for that. So that'll, that's not done yet, and so they don't know what's going to happen. They spent $5,000 on plowing this year for their parking lot. There'll be a 1912 sign mock-up done, so you'll see one happen in the summer for the Plaza concerts, because they want to try out a sign to see how it looks and to see if people like it, to get some reactions and input on the sign of, so it'll look like the tiles that she had said they were going to do. Moscow, I mean, May 4 is Idaho Gives, so if you want to give to the 1912, give $19 on May 4, and go to idahogives.org. Last year, they raised $4,144, and they get, you know, matching and awards and different things for that. Transportation, I got to go to that meeting, and Les and ITD and Mura reported, and, you know, I see Les smile more than any other time than when he's at the transportation, he gets to talk about everything there, and it was great. And they talked about all the biking and all that kind of stuff. It was a great meeting, those are really interesting. But nothing coming up on that. And then I think that is it for me. Oh, last thing with the 1912, they sent out their newsletter, the Friendly Neighbors newsletter, and they've been sending that out. And so if you're interested in volunteering, they're looking for volunteers at the Friendly Neighbors.
Okay, Gina?
Okay. First and foremost, I attended the Pathways Commission meeting, and they're, they're working a lot on still locating and verifying orphan paths, talking about the South Couplet and ways that they can work in the pedestrian and bike-friendly world into that. They're working on their new farmer's market display board, which, by the way, is pretty cool. And they've set some dates for the annual bike tour, but we're still discussing some of them, so that is TBD. I went to the Sustainable Environment Commission as well. A lot of what they did, you saw this evening in the Earth Day Awards. We're also discussing potential films for the sponsorship that they do annually. They are, they subcommitted the pesticide use in city parks discussion, and so that will be, I'm sure, will come back to us. And they're talking about how to best preserve and conserve pollinators in our community as well. The Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee is indeed, as, who was it that talked about it, was it Paul or John, talked about the alternative water supply report? That is coming, and it is huge and very, well, it's just huge. It's, and I don't mean to sound like our leader on the national.
Which leader are you talking about?
It's huge, it's huge! But it is a very large process and a long-term process. So it'll be kind of a cool moment for us to, you know, take that 10, 20-year, it was a pretty good imitation, wasn't it? You're kind of still laughing. Okay, that's all I did.
John?
Yeah, I've got Fair and Affordable Housing Met, and they had received a report on the ASUI landlord slash tenant workshops, and they decided to make this fall activity, and the format was discussed. They have not completed the format work. And then they did the, the, received the report on the affordable housing promotions for April. The press release is ready and will be put out. And then they also talked about reviewing the guiding principles of affordable housing, and after some discussion, they figured that that still needed some work, so that is still on the burner. And then the farmer's market, Fair and Affordable Housing will be at the farmer's market on May 20. And then the Idaho Housing is having a training workshop on May 22, which is very good. It's a good thing. It helps both the tenants and the landlords and people with the Idaho Housing understand what's going on, and they're able to make better choices and inform each other better. And then planning and zoning, the preliminary development for 201 West Sixth Street, which is Sangria Development, the planning and zoning accepted the preliminary development, and with the possible exception of two possible conditions. And, but that was a fairly good jump forward by the people from Sangria, because now they have essentially officially jumped into the fray. Now, they have yet to buy the property from the Urban Renewal District, but that will be coming in front of the Urban Renewal District people. And then the Harvest Hills Platte, which extends Third Street to the east, past Mountain View, that was accepted, and there are two or three conditions that were added to that. And then the off-street parking, the comprehensive plan, use table formatting, all of those things are going to be discussed more at length on April 26.
And you filled in for Walter?
Yes, and I filled in for Walter, and I apologize to them profusely for not asking too many questions.
Okay, John. With that, I will move on. And the only thing that I'm going to report on tonight was the accident that happened on campus on Thursday evening. Could have been an absolute terrible thing. It was terrible the way it was, where four people got injured on campus with the rocket fuel thing. The comments that I want to make, there was, and our chief of police was informing me all the way through the, pretty much the night and the wee hours of the morning, how things developed and how things are going. And our police department, our fire department, our EMS department has got to have absolute kudos. Came also from the emergency room at Gritman, because these four individuals were loaded up and were at Gritman within 11 minutes of the explosion. And the ER doctors commented about what an awesome job of the collaboration, working together for all groups. And the big thing that I want to make about that is, that is, you know, I talk about collaboration all the time as a mayor, and that is something that was just absolutely awesome, something that could have been an absolute disaster, turned out pretty doggone good, and we're all so very, very thankful of that. And for, I just wanted to comment that, you know, the police department, the fire department, EMS, and Gritman worked together when those ambulances rolled in, the emergency doctors were on staff, ready to go, just like a big deal. So it really made me feel great as a mayor, knowing if we had some kind of an accident like that that could happen, that within minutes, every end of it was reacted and taken care of, and so that was a big deal. And I just wanted to share that with the community. I thought that was pretty cool, how the way it all turned out. We're going to have a briefing on that tomorrow night, which I plan on being there, Gary. And I'm going to let you talk about the city cleanup.
Yes, thank you. This weekend, or this week, excuse me, the 21st, the annual city downtown cleanup is taking place. That is...
9:00 AM at Friday, Gary?
9:00 AM, I was getting there.
Hey, you see you're a little dry there, I'm trying to help you out a little bit.
Yes, thank you. We'll be going ahead at 9 o'clock, gathering in Friendship Square. We usually have kind of a... God, dryer, I thought.
I'm going to be there, incidentally, with my jeans and a T-shirt on, and a broom, gloves, sweeping.
Maybe you better take it from me.
Okay, well, the city cleanup, what we do, we, it's a, kind of the face for the kickoff prior to our farmer's market, prior to the University of Idaho graduation, just kind of cleaning our downtown core area up. We get a lot of city employees involved in that. I will be down there, as many councilors as we can, would be awesome to have down there helping. It's a fun day, we usually have lunch afterwards, and it's, and we get businesses involved, so it's a fun thing. We have a good time. I see Jenny out there from the chambership, be out there helping lead the charge, I'm sure. But it's a big deal for us, because it's a, it's a night for our community. We're getting ready for our farmer's market. Like I said, it's coming, happening in two weeks, and so it's pretty cool. And our university graduation, and so it's a big deal. This is our town, and we're damn proud of it.
UI Moms Weekend this weekend.
UI Moms Weekend, good. So I'll get a chance to see a bunch of moms, I love that, too. And so there you have it.
Sweet.
So with that, I would, John?
I'm just, I should probably clarify, I took a shot at Councilman Walter Steed, who is not here.
To defend himself.
And it was in fun.
Yes.
Walter is a great councilman, he reads the material, and if he does have a question, he will ask that question, which oftentimes is very necessary. So Walter, if you happen to hear this or see this, don't kill me.
With that, John, I would entertain a motion from somebody to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
John, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 8:28. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.